All right, this time I'd like to call regularly scheduled meeting which is the Department of Public and City Commission, which has been posted to order. And call upon Commissioner Yule for me to lead us into the kitchen.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you are the source of all that is good and that you are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for all the gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather together today. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our City Commission meeting. We're glad to have you here. And without objection, I'm going to take a part of citizen communication out of order. And we have two individuals who've signed up. Speaker Louisian Vasquez Yola, and she's the Family Consumer Science County Agent, and Enrique Pettis, who's with Agarla County Agent. So if you all would like to come up and report on your project, we'd love to hear from you.
Good afternoon. I want to say thank you so much for all the support that we have from the city of Harlingen. You have a little flyer there with the pictures, you know. People were very happy with the recipes and enjoyed it. And we have also a program for youth, and we have around 15 children that they learn about nutrition and physical activity as well. And the reason having this program is to provide information to the citizens of Cameron County to learn how to eat healthy and also save money when they are doing that, and have a very simple recipe so everybody can eat healthy. So, thank you so much for your support. And also I want to share with you that we have another program, you know, if you want to do it as well. The name is Walk Across Texas, and this one has to do also with exercise. And this is a free program as well. So if you want more information about this one, I will be happy to give you the information. Also, you have some bags there with some goodies for you, so you can get something that we share with the people in the community center. But also, I want to ask the mayor if you want to receive these, you know. And he needs to thank you for all the support that the city of Harlingen provided to our agency, Texas A&amp;M Agarla Extension.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for bringing that great program to our community. It looks like you had a fantastic turnout, because Al was there, and it fits right in with our Healthy Harlingen initiative. So, thank you so much for putting this program on in our community.
Anything else, we are there to help.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do the rest of the citizen communication at the end of the meeting. So, item one is the presentation of the proclamation claiming the month of August as Spinal Muscular Atrophy Awareness Month. And so I'd like to invite those that are involved in this presentation, Kristen Resendez, Jack Resendez Ramiro, and Sylvia Resendez Erasmo, and Cecilia Resendez, Paul and Mary Castillo, and Jaime and Irma Resendez, and Jennifer Molina, and any others that would like to join us up here for the presentation of this proclamation. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. Good to see you all here.
Yes.
Well, Kim, if you want to maybe place the audience here, or if you don't want to forget. Somebody's going to take a picture at some point. But we want to bring awareness for this important issue. Whereas spinal muscular atrophy, SMA, is a rare neurodegenerative disease that drives people of physical strength by affecting the motor nerve cells in the spinal cord, enhancing their ability to walk, swallow, and in the most severe phases, the ability to breathe. And whereas SMA has four primary stages, types one, two, three, and four, based on the age of onset and highest physical milestone to be. Type one is the most severe and most common, typically diagnosed during an infant's first six months. It is often fatal at this early stage of life. And whereas SMA is the leading genetic cause of death for infants today, affecting approximately one in 11,000 babies, approximately 12,000 Americans who are affected with four types of SMA, and one in every 50 Americans is a genetic carrier. Whereas SMA can affect any race or gender, although research is ongoing, and unfortunate advances are being made every day by the cure. As of December 23rd, 2015, the first ever treatment for SMA, Zetraso, was approved by the FDA. It was all that I, Mayor Chris Boswell, of the City Department, could hereby proclaim the month of August 2017 as Spinal Muscular Atrophy Awareness Month in Harlingen, Texas, and urge all citizens to join in promoting awareness of spinal muscular atrophy disease. So, we'd like to present this proclamation to you, and recognize you, your family, and Captain Jackson, a regular at our city events here lately, and I really enjoy having him around. And we're so glad that you're bringing this kind of awareness to our community. If you'd like to say anything, please do.
All I'd like to say is, every day, I meet a new family in the valley in Harlingen that are affected by this disease who do not ever speak out, who don't ever tell the world, who don't ever find out, who don't ever report to our elders. My son is one of the only children in the valley, or is the only child in the valley who's ever received the first ever ikeia treatment for SMA. And we have to go to Dallas to do that, and it's every four months for the rest of his life. So it's a really big deal. I love this community, and I grew up here, and my health care, that I can say lots of thanks by making awareness and community advocacy.
All right, thanks. Thanks so much. All right, we'll see you next time. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Here now is our motion to approve the minutes.
Some motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose might sign motion carries. Items three A through K, or other consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
I'm moving back. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose might sign motion carries. Item four is consideration of possible action to approve the recommendation of Scott Gibbs, insurance consultant with the firm Siegels and Williams regarding the employee's health group insurance for fiscal year 2017-18, naming the insurance agents and authorize the city manager to sign the contract. So, Scott, if you'd like, please come forward and tell us what you recommend.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thanks for having me today. So we started this process, the presentation will probably look a little familiar. So we started the process where, you know, we moved to Blue Cross last year from Allegiant. The initial renewal came out at about 22 percent. First year renewals are always tough for carriers on the fully insured side. Just, you know, by the time you start doing it, they don't have a lot of credibility and mature claims. So, the first year is always kind of the toughest year. So, a little bit on the current plan history. So, when you look at our loss ratio from October 1st, 2016 through June 30th, it was about a 77 percent loss ratio. What that means is total paid claims out versus paid premiums. Now, what I will say is that 77 percent looks, wow, they're making a lot of money on us. But the reality is, is that's what we call an immature loss ratio year. And when I say immature, it's because it's a first year. So if you think about it, when you go to the doctor, when you go to the doctor October 1st, it may take 45 to 60 days for that medical claim to hit. So, in a first year, in a first year case, there's usually about 45 to 60 days where you're going to see your medical claims be lower, you know, be lower than in a true mature claim year. So, we paid out, again, the paid claims was about $3,649,000. The paid premium was $4,745,000. Last year, October 1st, 2015 to September 30, 2016, we were with Allegiant. Again, it was a one-year deal, so it was an immature claim year, and basically 10 months of claims on 12 months of a premium. So, the loss ratio there we had was a 79 percent. What a carrier looks for in an immature claim, you know, claim year loss ratio is about a 73 percent. When you're fully mature, the carriers typically are looking for a loss ratio of somewhere between 85 and 87 percent. So, in a first year, that's kind of what they look at. So, we weren't running terrible, you know, not running great. And again, I think, like I said earlier, first year renewals are always a little tricky because, you know, there's kind of the certainty of the unknown that's out there. And I think, I think there were some questions, I mean, we had the Allegiant data too, but I think there were some, you know, a little bit of concerns about potentially the accuracy of the Allegiant data. So, what we did, we decided to release an RFP, and we...
Scott?
Yes, sir.
That date was wrong, is that not correct?
Which one?
The top one?
Oh, it should be, yeah, I'm sorry, it should be June 30th, 2017. Sorry about that. I apologize. Yeah, it's October through June 30th of 2017. Sorry.
Okay.
So, we did release the, we released a proposal for both fully insured and partially self-funded medical plans on June 26th. We asked for questions back on the 7th, the deadline was the 18th. We went through everything, I've had conversations with staff, and I'm here to make a recommendation tonight. So, we looked at fully insured and we looked at partially self-funded. I will tell you, when looking at the partially self-funded, again, the premiums on the fully insured are still running, they're running about the same as if we were partially self-funded or a little bit better. I think, I think as we get through this claim year with Blue Cross and have a full mature year of claims, I think potentially there, you know, might be the opportunity in 2018 to look at moving self-funding. But looking at the numbers this year, with both combined from the Allegiant numbers and the Blue Cross numbers, the self-funded numbers still were not as aggressive or, were not as, you know, as aggressive as the fully insured numbers. So, on the fully insured responses, we did get three responses. We got Blue Cross Blue Shield, who gave us multiple options. TML came in, not competitive, they were a plus 61. UHC came in, again, they were not competitive, they were to 28, they had alternative plans at about a 20. It's a challenge right now on the fully insured, I mean, I think you guys, you know, you see the news and you hear about the carriers and the marketplace and things, and that all flows from the top down. You know, the reality is, there's, you know, there's just, you've got the BUCAs that are left that do fully insured, and really Cigna doesn't like to do fully insured. So you're really, you know, you've got Blue Cross, United, and Aetna down in the valley. Sometimes they struggle with their networks and their network discounts. You know, Aetna's trying to get some business down here, but again, just, they haven't been able to put the networks together. So, again, options are a little limited. And also too, a first year, being a first year renewal case and then having left Allegiant, I think sometimes that makes it a little, a little tricky too. So, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, they offered, the renewal for the current plans came in at about 18.8 percent. So they moved off the, I think we were at 23 percent when we started. They did offer three alternatives with plan changes. Alternative one had three plans with benefit changes, it was about a 6.1 percent increase. Alternative two, and I'll show these to you in a minute, alternative two was actually two plans with a 5.4 percent increase. Alternative three was three plans at a plus 4.8 percent increase. Each of the alternatives did include an option, the Blue Essentials HMO option, which is available in the valley. It's a smaller network, there's no out-of-network benefits. I will say the physician makeup is about 91 percent of the physicians that are in Blue Cross's big network are in this network. You can see the numbers I've put there. So, primary care is about 98 percent, specialist 83 percent, the hospitals for Cameron County are Harlingen Medical, Valley Baptist, Valley Baptist Medical Center, Brownsville and Valley Regional Medical Center. So, still a, you know, still a strong network, just a little bit, a little bit smaller than their, than their large network. So, the renewal, you can see a 19 percent increase to keep the plans that we have today. So, you know, did ask Blue Cross to provide alternatives, knowing that 19 percent was not going to be able to probably be achieved in the budget. So the first option that came back, and what I've done is I've highlighted in yellow the plan changes. So, alternative one keeps three plans in place. Plan one continues to offer, have a deductible at $750 and $1,500 for the family. This would take the co-insurance, so your out-of-pocket maximum, up to $6,550 and to $1,301, which is much higher than what we have today. And then the family co-insurance would be $1,301 to $2,620. And then changing of the pharmacy from 15, from the $10,3560 to $1,540-60. They did offer a, the Blue Essentials HMO network, and it would be a $1,500 deductible, a $3,000 family deductible, the out-of-pocket maximum would be $3,500 and $7,000. The RX would stay the same. And then the third plan option, we would no longer have a $500 deductible plan, it would be a third PPO option at $1,000, $1,000 individual deductible, $2,000 for a family, co-insurance of $6,550 and $1,301, and the drug plan changes. And this was roughly about 6.18 percent increase. One of the things when I talked to staff, and I felt like on this too, was I felt like the out-of-pocket maximum was a little too high versus kind of what we had today, it almost doubled it. So if a person really had a bad event happen to them, you know, they would either be out to $6,550 or to $1,301. So, alternative two is, was going to two plans from, was going to two plans from three plans that we have today. And it would, we would get rid of plan three, we would have plan one, which would be a, still have a $750, $1,500 family deductible. The out-of-pocket maximum would go to $4,000, $8,000. We would change the urgent care to $75. Have a $50 deductible on the RX, which means the first time you would go in to fill your prescription, you would, you would fill the $50 deductible, and it's capped at three times for a family. And then we would, we would move the drug plan to $1,540, $65, and $100. I do think it's important, I think on the drug plan, I do think that's an area that, that, you know, whether we needed to make plan changes or not, we probably needed to address because we, we had a very, a very good drug plan, but what we're finding, you know, in the marketplace, I think you're probably reading it, you know, pharmacy trend is running right now anywhere between 12 and 15 percent. Specialty pharmaceuticals are running closer to 25 percent. So, you know, most of the clients that we're working with, it's not that they're cutting pharmacy benefits, but they're all, they're just, they're trying to put some consumer models in place so people are really thinking about, you know, kind of, kind of what their spend is on the pharmacy. So, this option would also have the Blue Essentials plan that we talked about earlier, $1,500 deductible, $3,000 for a family, the out-of-pocket max would be $4,000 and $8,000, $75 urgent care, and the $50 RX deductible, and a $1,540, $65, and $100. And this, this was, the plan was roughly about 5.4 percent above current. And then the last, the last alternative that they provided for Blue Cross would be plan one. Right now, we currently have a per-admission deductible of $250. That would go to 500. We would leave the $750, $1,500 deductible in place. The co-insurance would go to the lower level of $4,000, $8,000, $75 copay, and then the plan changes to the drug plan. The, we would put the HMO in, it would again have a $500 per-admission deductible, you would have the $1,500, $3,000 deductible, the $4,000, $8,000 out-of-pocket max with the plan changes. And we would continue to offer a third plan, so we would have a, you know, one plan with a $750 deductible, one with a $1,000 deductible, one with $1,500. And this plan would be $1,000, $2,000 for individual, $2,000 for a family deductible, $4,000, $8,000 on the out-of-pocket maximum, and a $75 copay. And then the drug plan changes again with the $50 RX deductible and then the $1,540, $65, $100. Again, still good plans, still allowing the city to pick up the cost of the lowest plan. After talking to staff and looking at the options, you know, the recommendation, you know, kind of landed on, on option three. So from a cost standpoint, you can see our current plans, we are at about, total cost is $6.2 million. The city's paying about $5.1 million, employees are paying about $1.2 million. If we just kept the splits the same way with the city picking up, picking up the 45 percent for dependents, we, you know, the total cost goes to the $6.5 million. And, you know, and it goes up, the city's cost goes up to $5.1 million, and the employees' $1.4 million, so.
Sir, can I ask you?
You're up.
Those are the current numbers versus what you're proposing, the 6.2 and the $5.1. What were they the year before when we went to this current plan?
6.2, they were about 6.2. We, I think Blue Cross came in at a rate pass for last year. So we were at, so, so 15, 16 would have been about, would have been around a 6.2, 6.3, and then 16, 17 would be at the 6.2, 6.3.
Okay, and the 6.2, 6, the 6.2, 6.3, and 15 and 16, was the employee match the same or the payable was the $5.1?
Yeah, we, yeah, so we did not, so for 2015 and 16, then moving to 16, 17, we did not, the employees did not have an increase at all.
Okay, so we didn't notice an increase the year before, right?
I think we did.
Very slight?
14, 15, yes.
Okay, and then you're saying the reason for the big jump, because, I mean, we're not changing carriers, right?
Right.
Right? So, the reason for the big jump is what? To keep on their current plan?
For the big jump on the, and again, I think what I've done is just kind of kept the current splits. I think that during budget...
Right, and what I'm asking is, is the same coverage, to keep everything the same and not change any, anything with the plan, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you're showing a 19 percent increase for, for a 19 percent, and what is the reason behind it?
The reason behind it is, is due to the claims, the claims information and large claims that are out there. And again...
And do you see those as, are they one-time occurrences, was it just an anomaly year?
I don't...
And, and do you, because to keep the current insurance, and you had an increase because they actually use the insurance or whatever, wouldn't both the same, it wouldn't do the same thing as the following year, right? I mean, unless they came and continue to make claims or...
Well, the claims are what they are.
Right.
I mean, and so nobody, that's the, if everybody had a crystal ball, we'd be great. But, so they're looking at the claims that they have now, and when they look at that claim, they know what type of claim it is, and so they can project into the future. So that matters, there's lots of things that matter.
Well, I know there's several components to it, but I'm having an issue with it. The last thing I want to do is take insurance away from employees.
Absolutely. And we tried, you know, and we did go out, we marketed, and, you know, again...
Humana was not a company that we could look at or any other...
Yeah, well, we sent it to Humana, we sent it to Aetna, we sent it to Cigna...
And no response.
And no response. So, we tried, you know, when we put it out to bid, we make sure that, you know, we work with all the major carriers, and we make sure that they all get it, and we make sure they've got good data, current data, talk to all the carriers, you know. We, you know, have a question and answer time, you know, to answer any questions. Unfortunately, that, you know, those were the quotes that we got this year. And I, like I said, I wish I, you know, I wish, I wish I had a, you know, better, better numbers. I think, like I said, first year renewals are always tough.
And when is the deadline, or when do you have to have an answer?
You know, we don't, I mean, with it being a 10-1, a 10-1 renewal, so having to get the plan changes communicated out, I mean...
We have to start signing people up in September.
Right.
Because the premiums have to actually start being deducted in September.
Because I would like to look at it a little harder. I mean, I don't know how you all feel, but I'm, I am not in favor of like trying to take employees' benefits or reducing them for whatever reason.
Well, I'd say it's, this isn't just us, it's a universal situation with the increase in healthcare.
Absolutely.
The shift has gone to where the employees, you know, bear their share of the burden on the increase, and that's unfortunate, but that's...
But what I'm saying is that I'm not prepared to cut anything right now unless we go find the money and try to figure out how we're going to deal with it. Because it's, it's a necessary cost, it's a cost of doing business, and again, I'm not prepared right now unless I, I need to look at it a little longer or a little harder to find out. I'm just, I'm not prepared to do that. Not, not right now.
Now, where it stands right now, the employee on dependent coverage would realize an increase based on our split, on our percentage that we pay.
Right.
But that, again, we're still going through the budget process, and we're still having discussion on the budget itself. So this is a vegetarian item, but I will tell you that 18 percent increase, or nearly a 19 percent increase, is a huge increase.
Understood, yeah.
And we've talked about, we've had one budget workshop already, and we've talked about the budget, where revenues are coming in and some of the expenses that we're going to incur next year, so.
All right, Scott, I mean, Commissioners had his, you know, I think you've had your opportunity to ask questions, so if you want, go ahead and complete your presentation on this.
So, you know, the recommendation, working with staff, is again, you know, I don't think there's any financial advantage after looking at the numbers to go partially self-funded this year. I do think it's something for 18, 19 that I think it would be a viable, a viable option. Recommendation would be to remain with fully insured with Blue Cross, alternative three plan options, which would result in a 4.81 percent increase, and also stay with the current agents, which are Shepherd Walton and Texas Insurance Services.
So, alternative three, the employee has the choice of picking plan one, plan two, or plan three, is that correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely, they can pick any one of the three plans.
So this 4.81 percent increase, I'm just doing back of the envelope math, so that's 301,000. If we went 19 percent increase and kept everything as-is, we would multiply that times basically five, so you're looking at a $1.4 million dollar increase.
Roughly.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And so the question becomes, budget-wise, we have to afford at least $301,000 increase, but can we afford a $1.4 million increase? We run a tight ship... increase? We run a tight ship. I think seventy-two percent of our income goes to employees, employee benefits. Doesn't leave much money to run the rest of the business.
So what you're asking them to do is ship the liability to the employee, and you're asking the employee to pay more out of pocket.
Right. Right. Or we could ask the taxpayer to assume the liability of one point four million dollars.
Right. And again, that's why I said, I think we need to look at, you know, where-
And none of this is easy.
Oh, yeah. No.
And this isn't a Harlingen city government issue. It's across the United States. And companies and governments and businesses are having the same discussion.
And that's why I wanted to look at it a little longer to see if there's any other projects or anything else we're doing that, that we could afford to wait or put off and not sure we can-
Well, the calendar's ticking. We can't wait for anything.
Yeah. I mean, Commissioner, I think that's a, you know, certainly that's a reasonable request. We want to do the best that we can for the employees. We have had situations in the past, I can tell you, it was a very difficult situation where we didn't make a decision on our, on our carrier and timely basis, and it caught, and we were switching from one carrier to the next. And so employees did not get enrolled. And employees who had severe health issues were, didn't, didn't have insurance for a few days. It made it very, very difficult on, on those employees. I had to, I had, I stood here and apologized to a terminally ill employee for our failure to timely get this issue resolved and provide insurance for him and his family. And I'm not going to do that again. We're going, you know, it's important to want to give them the best break they can, but we don't want to delay. And it, it sounds like we've exhausted our, everybody that is a potential bidder on this. And it sounds like Blue Cross, Blue Shield has come up with a pretty good proposal that, you know, either once you're, you know, whichever one you want to do, I mean, you can, you could, you can elect. If you think we ought to spend more money, then that's a reasonable proposal. But I don't think we're going to find another insurance carrier. And I think it would be-
I'm not asking for an insurance carrier. I'm trying to find out where to find the money to make sure that they're not losing coverage.
I think it would be a shame to miss, to miss the opportunity to make this contract. All right. Having said that, does anybody else have any questions about Scott's recommendation?
Scott, have we ever had a health fare or anything like that where we check the input and where we have it available to the employees for them to get basic medical information, blood pressure, you know, ID screening?
I think we do do, I think we do do health fares. Oh, yeah. So, yeah. So we-
We did have Catapult.
Oh, yeah. We did. Okay. That's right. They, we used Catapult, which is a vendor Blue Cross does. And Catapult will come out, and they do biometric screening and testing for the employees.
And do we have good participation in that?
Everybody that signs up, we had, like, any two people that missed it. We had a conflict. We had a register heading. But we're also looking at, also doing a regular tech on the healthcare versus the biometric ones. But it worked well. It worked well. We did along with Waterworks and I think the housing authority also disappeared. So we don't want to think of it.
I think it's important to have that opportunity.
All right. You want to hear the, you want to the dental now, or you want to-
I didn't know. Do you all need to take them separately, or?
I think we need to take them separately.
Can we listen to both presentations and then do the question? That way he doesn't have to wait.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the voluntary dental, what I want to stress too is that this is a voluntary benefit, meaning the city does not put any, any cost into this. So this, this is paid for by, by the employee. The process that we did was, was very similar. We went out to market, June twenty-sixth. We got responses back the eighteenth. We're here today. We did have, we had a lot of people respond on the dental. Of course, we didn't get a ton of, you know, of competitive quotes, but you can see Delta Dental, Ameritas, Blue Cross, IMA, Lincoln. The renewal came, original renewal came back from Aetna at about a seventeen point eight percent increase. They provided, you know, multiple options to get that down. You can see, you know, the other carriers, like Delta was at thirty-nine point seven five. Ameritas quoted, they, they had a plan that matched at eleven point one six, but it didn't match benefits. It, it was what we call a MAC plan. I'll explain that again in a minute, a maximum allowable charge plan. Blue Cross came in at about a forty-two percent. IMA was, was a self-funded quote. Lincoln was at plus thirty-one percent. So, you know, again, good, good players, just it was, you know, the rates were just a little, little bit higher. So the current vendor's Aetna, the renewal they came back with was a sixteen point eight. They did give a second year rate cap of seven percent for next year. They provided multiple alternatives. I narrowed it to three, again, since, you know, the other carriers, none of them really had competitive quotes. So what I'll do is walk you through the, the Aetna ones. So our current benefits with Aetna, we've got a fifty dollar individual deductible, a hundred and fifty family. Our low plan, we have a hundred percent preventive coverage, a hundred percent basic. Major is at zero. Endo and periodonics is at a hundred. And then what the R and C means is it's reasonable and customary. So right now, our plan pays ninety percent of the reasonable and customary charge for that area. Okay? So, very good benefit, very good benefit. Calendar year maximum is twelve fifty. No orthodansia on the low plan. On the high plan, it's a fifty, fifty dollar deductible, a hundred for preventive, eighty for basic, fifty for major, eighty for peri- and, and for endo and peri-oh. Ninety percent reasonable customary. We do have an ortho benefit of fifty percent up to a thousand. Current rates are sixteen twenty, thirty-one seventy-five, fifty-one fourteen, twenty-four sixty-one, forty-eight seventy-one, and eighty-two oh seven. You can see the renewal at sixteen point eight, but all the benefits stay the same, mainly, you know, the reasonable and customary. So, the options that Aetna provided, so Option One is called a MAC plan. So they match the benefits. The difference is reasonable and customary is going to pay ninety percent of the cost for that area. So it's going to look, it's going to look across dentists and average it out and pay ninety percent. The maximum allowable charge is going to pay up to the, up to the in-network negotiated rate of Aetna. Big difference. So you might have a, you know, you might have a, let's say, you know, you might have a Crown. This is going to be probably a lot cheaper. But let's say you have a Crown, and the reasonable, it's a thousand, let's say the Crown is fifteen hundred. Reasonable customary pays ninety percent of that fifteen hundred. So that would be one fifty. So, so it would pay thirteen fifty. You know, the, however, on a MAC plan, the negotiated rate's a thousand dollars. So now you've got a Delta of three hundred and fifty dollars. It's a, it really is a big difference. And when I asked Aetna, I mean, currently, we've got about fifty-one percent of the people going to in-network providers. So, you know, sixteen point eight looks like a big number, but when you start looking at, you know, four or five dollars a month versus all of a sudden, if I really need the coverage and I'm going to, you know, and I'm going to get a root canal, and it's all of a sudden, it's five or six hundred bucks out of my pocket, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big difference. They did quote some other options. So the MAC plan was about a two percent above current. All of them had the seven percent rate cap. This plan, they quoted, they increased, they doubled the deductible, lowered some of the benefits. This got us to, to about a one percent. You know, and I'm just, what I would say on this, you know, my recommendation, and again, we could do, my recommendation would be to, to renew with the current benefits. The increases range on the low side from two dollars and seventy-two cents for an employee on the low plan to thirteen dollars and seventy-nine cents for a family on the high plan. I think moving to any one of those other plans, I think the exposure the member's going to have, if they have a true dental procedure, whether it be a filling, a crown, I think they're going to be paying a lot more out of their pocket versus, versus the dollars on the premium upfront. And again, these run through the, the Section one twenty-five plan. And again, we would recommend staying with the current agents, Shepherd Walton and Texas Insurance Services.
To get your, your MAC clear in my mind, that fifteen hundred dollar Crown at ninety percent, I pay one fifteen, they pay the difference.
Right.
Correct. On the MAC plan, they've negotiated a thousand dollars on that. So I'm liable for five hundred, not three hundred.
Right.
Correct.
Right. And that's why I, I'm just not a huge fan of the MAC plans. Now, if you, if I, if, if, Aetna would have told me you guys have seventy percent of the people going in-network, I probably would have said, your exposure's a lot less, because they're already, they're already going to somebody that's, that's at, at that cap level. But, you know, if you have a, under a MAC plan versus a ninety percent, if you have somebody that's really needs the dental care, they're going to become a big time out of their pocket more.
And how many of our, what did you say the percentage of-
Right now, they're showing, there's about fifty-one percent of, of the people that are, they're utilizing an in-network provider. It's not like, and again, you can't really compare it to medical because the dental networks aren't quite a, you know, they're not as large as, as, as the medical. There's just, a lot of the dentists don't, they don't want to participate in a, you know, in a plan. They'll file for it and everything. They just, they, you know, don't want to sign up for the, the rate. So-
So then to recap, this is a purely voluntary insurance program available to the employees.
Yes, sir.
Take it or leave it.
Yes, sir.
And you're recommending the Aetna renewal, whereas the two MAC plans have some deficiencies in them that if utilized, not cost the employee significantly higher.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, does the staff recommend that we accept?
Please, Scott. The consultant's recommendation on the health insurance and on dentists.
Okay. So, does anybody have any more questions for Ephraim, or Dan, or Scott, or, okay. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation as presented on, on item number four, which is the health insurance policy?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Item five is consideration of possible to award a voluntary dental health plan to city parliers and employees for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen with possible yearly options and authorize the city manager to negotiate, sign a contract. Is there a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation on the dental plan?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments and discussion. That's always, this is always a difficult issue for us. If-
Wish I could say it was gonna, I wish I could say-
Prices continue to increase.
I wish I could say I thought it was going to get easier, but-
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott.
Item six, consideration of possible action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen, and schedule two public hearings to be held on Friday, August eleventh at twelve noon, and Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty seventeen at five thirty P M.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The tax code requires that when a proposed tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate, the tax union must vote on the proposed rate, record the vote, and schedule two public hearings on the proposal before the tax rate can be adopted. The tax rate that is being proposed is point five eight 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 two seven, and does exceed the effective tax rate of point five eight three six zero zero. The proposed tax rate is the same rate adopted for the last, past eight years when it was lowered from point five nine. This rate has been used to calculate the private tax revenue in the proposed fiscal year twenty eighteen budget. One cent change, and the tax rate would equal an additional three hundred and four thousand and three dollars. The tax code, Section twenty-six point oh five six subsection D, requires the city to hold two public hearings and publish the newspaper ad before adopting a tax rate. As will be published notifying the public of the two hearings, staff recommends approval of the proposed tax rate of point five eight 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 two seven. And I will take any questions.
You said a one penny increase would result in how much extra cash flow?
Three hundred and four thousand dollars.
So we would, so back to the last issue, in order to raise one point four million dollars for health insurance, we would have to increase taxes by four cents.
Correct.
Okay.
Which would be about a seventy-five, seven and a half percent of the Norris.
So the rest of that is maintained. Is his existing tax rate correct?
Correct.
All right. So is there, is there a motion to accept the staff's recommendation regarding the desired tax rate and to schedule the two public hearings?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. And then, item seven, consideration of possible action to approve an order for first reading to amend the city parliers' budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen.
The item before the commission is a budget amendment which will allocate funds for grants and other revenues and expenditures that were not previously budgeted in the current budget. Exhibit A attached to the agenda packets displays total revenues, expenditures, and estimated fund balances by fund after the amendment. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Would you read the caption, please?
Yes. The ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October one, twenty sixteen through September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Total budget revenues will increase to seventy-one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. The total budget expenditures will increase to eighty-one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, provided for publication of the caption of this ordinance and remaining other matters related to the bill.
Is there a motion to adopt the order on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what was that number again?
Total budget. Total budget expenditures will increase eighty-one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, the other number.
Budget revenues increase seventy-one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three.
Seventy-one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three forty-three. It's in the caption of the order. Yeah. Doing my math right.
Okay.
Percentages.
Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right. Item eight, consideration of possible action to authorize the Director of Aviation to request from the Federal Aviation Administration a land release from federal obligations associated with airport property described as Area Number Twenty-Four on the airport property map. Mr. Eastley, welcome.
Thank you. I'm getting to be a regular around here.
Awesome.
Thank you. Just like we said here, we have some, some land. It was purchased in nineteen ninety-four timeframe. It's the area, Area Twenty-Four in green, not to be confused with Area Fifty-One. But Area Twenty-Four in green, it's approximately two hundred and fifty-
Not to be confused with Area Fifty-One.
Yeah.
Fifty-One.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry. That was bad, bad, bad and in poor taste joke. But in either case, this property is about two hundred and fifty acres of land that was purchased, again, in nineteen ninety-four. Every time you, you actually apply for a new grant since that time, you have grant assurances. And those grant assurances actually obligate that particular piece of property to about thirty-five- What we want to do is get out in front of this, if we find a business in this portion of the aerotropolis that we just can't seem to make a deal with in leasing the property on a long-term basis, that we would have the option to sell a tract of land in that area, and it would no longer be encumbered. The process of asking for a release is about ninety days with the FAA. So if we're in, if we find a company that wants to come in there looking at property, we won't be able to give them the option of purchasing the property without knowing for sure that it would be released by the FAA. In the la, the last airport board meeting, the airport board recommended unanimously to the commission that we at least seek the release. It's not guaranteed, the FAA can, can refuse the release, but I feel that it's, it's in a position in an area that's non-aeronautical in, in nature, and it's industrial type, so I really feel that we have, we stand a pretty good chance that the FAA would release the property from federal obligations, so that we have those options in the future.
And were federal funds from the FAA used to acquire the property?
Uh, no, that's why area twenty-four was carved out of there, because that was actually purchased with airport revenue and no federal funds. If it was purchased with federal funds, we, when we do sell it, we would have to reimburse the, the federal funds.
And remind me again where the encumbrance comes from for the FAA and...
Once you list your airport property on the airport property map in appendix A that goes with your grant, and that's been done since nineteen ninety-four, the FAA considers that particular piece of property encumbered, or under obligation of those grant assurances.
So if you do that, you're going to revise your map not to show area twenty-four?
That's, that's exactly...
And that's the only real stipulation, because I've seen where, what you were asking where it's tied to a grant, and therefore you have to...
That's exactly right. The first thing we would do...
This is clear and clear, we just need their sign off to change the map?
Yes, yes, if they agree to it, then we'll actually submit to them with the, with the request, a new airport layout plan and airport property map that will not show area twenty-four there on the map, so it will no longer be obligated under future grants.
So this provides liquidity and negotiating, negotiating power on the airport's part?
That's, that's exactly right. We want to make sure that if we have a company and, and that's, that's great for, for an airport, great for the economy around here, that we can act quickly.
And you don't have a company to sell the land, but should it arise?
Yes, exactly, yeah, exactly.
All right, is there, is there any more que, any more questions? Is there a motion to authorize the director of aviation to request the land release from the FAA?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. I'm going to go ahead and skip items nine, ten, eleven, I'll come back to those, go to item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending chapter twenty-two, health, article two, emergency and non-emergency medical transportation services, code of ordinance, city parlor establishing effective date, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Yes, Mayor, this ordinance amendment, where administrations proposing relates to the ordinance that provides for exclusive arrangement with South Texas Emergency Care Foundation, which in addition to the ordinance is secured by a contract between the city and the organization. The, the purpose of, of the amendments we're proposing tonight are to, are to propose non-substantive clarifications to the ordinance that, that make the exclusive nature of the relationship between the city and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation a little clearer, and to also provide some additional clarifications to the types of services that come within the equity, and in what types of services are. And that's, that's the gist of the changes.
Would you call this just housekeeping, then?
It's largely housekeeping, just to make it clear that anyone who happens upon this ordinance and reads it, understands that the, the city is, is obligated to, under our contract with South Texas Emergency Care, rely for their exclusive provision of services that are covered by the ordinance within the city parlor.
I ask a question, normally when they come to us, we, we have an understanding that they're exclusive with us, but this really just defines it, so if somebody tried to look at, it's clear.
It removes a provision, it removes a provision of the, of the ordinance that, that may have given someone the impression that, that any provider of these services was eligible to apply for a license, despite the exclusivity that we've got with, with South Texas.
And is that the only clarification?
That, there's, there's an adjustment to the description of the types of services that are, that are, that are covered by the ordinance to, to ensure that we're not, that the ordinance isn't interpreted to cover things that, that aren't part of that exclusivity. And, and that's, that's, it's just, like you said, a housekeeping, non-substantive clarification, to make sure that, that, that the relationship's clear.
Okay, we have representatives of South Texas Emergency Care Foundation here, and you all are in agreement with the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, we are. I might just add one thing to what Alan has said. There, there's been a question since this ordinance was adopted a number of years ago about whether or not the ordinance prohibited someone from bringing a patient from outside the city of Harlingen to a facility in the city of Harlingen, and then taking that patient back in what we would consider to be a bona fide round trip from outside of the city to a medical facility. And one of the changes in the, in the amendment you have tonight is to clarify that that bona fide round trip is not something that is prohibited by the ordinance. In our meetings with chief addicts and, and others, it's been pretty clear that that was presenting some difficulty to the police department in enforcing the ordinance, and so that change has been, is incorporated in these amendments to kind of ease that burden on the police department, and make it clear that the round trips are not covered.
They're not covered?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-two of health, article two, emergency and non-emergency medical transportation services, of code ordinance of the, of the city of Harlingen, establishing effective date, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the full coverage.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading? No motion.
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
Just one question, I, I just want to make sure work clearer. So if somebody brings a patient into town, hospital, dialysis clinic, whatever, they can't wait for them, they, they leave, and then they have to arrange a separate transport to go back?
No, they can wait for them.
They can wait for them, that's what I asked.
The, the amendment clarifies that if someone is picking a patient up outside the city of Harlingen, bringing them to a facility in the city of Harlingen, and on the same day returns them back to the original location, they do not have to have a license to do that in the city of Harlingen, and they're not prohibited by the ordinance from doing that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
That bothered me.
But if they drop somebody off in the city of Harlingen and then hang around to see if they can find somebody else...
They can't come back two weeks later and pick them up and say that was a round trip.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank, thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, thank you for all you do for our community and the great service that you all provide to the citizens of Harlingen.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and do farmer's market, too. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action to accept or reject bids or contract to construct a Harlingen farmer's market canopy.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation awarded a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars to the Mayor Wellness Council to construct canopies for the farmer's market. You may recall, on February fifteenth, we approved a memorandum of agreement with the Harlingen Farmer's Market to allow for the construction of the canopies. We then subsequently amended the agreement on April fifth to allow for electrical structures to be constructed as well. The city would not forbid, and on July thirteenth, we received three. The lowest bid was submitted by Hallenopt LLC for a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars even. John Piercy reviewed the bid and is recommending an award to the contractor in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Staff recommends approval of the contract.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the bid as recommended?
So moved. Again?
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, let's go back to item nine, consideration of possible action to approve the facility use agreement between the city of Harlingen and the Arrow Girls Fast Pitch Softball for use of softball complex at Royal Park, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, this agreement is before you all for consideration. It's, the agreement is similar to what we approved last year. The, all the documentation has been received by our office, and we did take it to, to the park advisory board on July eighteenth, and they also have made recommendation for approval. Staff and park advisory board do recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the facility use agreement?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve the facility use agreement between the city of Harlingen Women's Soccer League for use of Harlingen Soccer Complex, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
This is, this is the same, or similar. The contract is, is the same as last year's. The, all the documentation has been received by our office, and the, the park advisory board has reviewed it on July eighteenth, and the board and staff do recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to repeal article four, sections thirty-six through seventy-seven, through thirty-six through one oh five, chapter thirty-six, the Harlingen Code of Ordinances to eliminate the Harlingen Tennis Advisory Board and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Mayor, City Commission, City Manager, we brought this to you all for consideration. The last meeting that, that the tennis advisory board has conducted was back in two thousand thirteen, and we had, we've had a real difficult time trying to get quorum for the board, and I believe there's two vacancies on that board right now, and so it's been really difficult. And over the last two years, or three years, we've been taking items that, that deal with the tennis, the H V tennis center, to our park advisory board for action. So what we'd like to do is to eliminate the, the board, or repeal it, and have all the activity go before the park advisory board.
Okay, so there'd still be citizen input just through the parks advisory board?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions about this? Then Alan, would you read the caption, please?
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, precious to handling Harlingen Code of Ordinances article four, sections thirty-six dash seventy-seven, through thirty-six dash one hundred and five, of chapter thirty-six, and its entirety, eliminating the Harlingen Tennis Advisory Board and Directors, and ordaining other matters related to the full coverage.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Fourteen board appointments.
I have none, none.
I have a reappointment of Kevin Campbell to the utility board in trust case.
All right, is there a motion to accept the board appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, executive session, closed session on the following items, attorney, A, Attorney Constable's petition to section five, one point oh seven one, to discover and provide legal advice and counsel connection with certain collective bargaining issues contained in the notice of intent bargain by the duly recognized majority of bargaining actions seized law enforcement officer, the Harlingen Police Officer and Law Enforcement Association, Harlingen Professional Fire Fighters Association, and B, sections five of one point oh eight seven, regarding commercial financial information for the business prospect, which the city is conducting here development discussions and/or to discuss a more deliberate financial or other incentive business prospect known as Project Liberty and Project Hay under C, and to seek legal advice from city attorney regarding that matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Second.
Second, the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to meet in the conference room with our attorneys regarding some matters in executive session. So there may, there is one item on the agenda that there could be action on when we return. Thank you. Okay, we're out of executive session at seven twenty-two.
This is where we conduct the audience drawing for a six-point color TV.
We're missing two, they're talking, right? You didn't tell everybody they have to be present to win, right?
Yes.
It's under one chair out there. That's what they did at that...
Separate them, separate them.
Pull them apart.
Okay, so we're going to go now to item sixteen, which is the consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to proceed with Project Liberty as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with Project Liberty as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, citizen communication, no citizen communication, so ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.